Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The May 9 meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. The purpose of this meeting is to hear testimony on the proposed FY23 county general and Board of Education budget. Please pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Fiedler, I believe, has some special, a special guest.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. In recent weeks, I've had the pleasure to attend several events at one of the District 5 fire stations, so it seemed fitting to invite Chaplain Zuko here with the Early Heights Volunteer Fire Department to do, or Fire Company to do the invocation.
Heavenly Father, it's so good that we could meet here in freedom to express our views, especially on money matters. When we get the family together to talk about money, it's always a fun time. And so, I pray, Father, your wisdom over these council members and their guests tonight that are speaking, that we would find some common ground in friendliness and moving our county forward to serve the public's good. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, Captain Zuko. Madam Secretary, oh, excuse me, this is for my colleagues. Is there any item any council member would like to place on this evening's agenda? All right, hearing none. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the budget bills for the benefit of our members of the public that are here this evening.
Bill number 3722, an ordinance concerning annual budget and appropriation ordinance of Anarundel County. Bill number 3822, an ordinance concerning tax levies, special community benefit districts, shore erosion control districts, and waterways improvement districts. Bill number 3922, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Arundel Gateway Special Taxing District. Bill number 4022, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Arundel Mills Special Taxing District. Bill number 4122, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Dorchester Special Taxing District. Bill number 4222, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Farmington Village Special Taxing District. Bill number 4322, an ordinance concerning tax levies, National Business Park Special Taxing District. Bill number 4422, an ordinance concerning tax levies, National Business Park North Special Taxing District. Bill number 4522, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Two Rivers Special Taxing District. Bill number 4622, an ordinance concerning tax levies, Village South at Wall Chapel Special Taxing District. Bill number 4722, an ordinance concerning finance taxation and budget income tax. Bill number 4822, an ordinance concerning property tax and semi-annual payment service charge.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have several individuals who will make brief statements on the budget. And our first presentation, or short statement, comes from Mr. Trumbauer. And he is our budget officer, he's our county budget officer.
Madam Chair and members of the county council, for the record, I am Chris Trumbauer, Budget Officer for Anarundel County. Thank you for the opportunity to give a brief overview of County Executive Stuart Pittman's proposed budget for fiscal year 2023. On March 14, Moody's announced that it was upgrading the county's credit rating to AAA for the first time, joining Standard and Poor's in giving Anarundel County the highest possible rating. The ratings increase was the result of a deliberate and strategic effort to strengthen the fiscal foundation of the county. The proposed budget before you continues that effort. Last year, County Executive Pittman proposed, and the county council approved, a fiscally conservative budget that got the county back on track as we emerged from the COVID pandemic. Since that time, the county has enjoyed a strong and robust local economy. Local income revenue, local income tax revenue is expected to exceed our FY22 budget estimates by $49 million. The county real estate market continued to be red hot, and our recordation and transfer tax revenue is now forecast to be $65 million higher than budgeted. Combined with cost savings across county government, this results in a county fund balance of more than $262 million. This year's proposed general fund budget is $2,157,450,050, an increase of $284.4 million from the adopted budget for fiscal year 2022. A more appropriate comparison involves subtracting out $154.6 million of the incremental fund balance and one-time revenue, which results in a $129.8 million increase from fiscal '22. This increase is equivalent to 7.4%, which is nearly identical to the January Consumer Price Index figure of 7.5%. The proposed budget includes an income tax cut for all county taxpayers by utilizing a new progressive local income tax structure authorized by the Tax Relief for Working Families Act. This budget will lower the income tax rate on the first $50,000 of taxable income for every taxpayer from 2.81% down to 2.70%. The rate for income above $50,000 remains unchanged at 2.81%, which is still the fourth lowest rate among Maryland's 24 county jurisdictions. Anarundel County has a property tax revenue cap that limits revenue to an annual increase equal to the January Consumer Price Index or 4.5%, whichever is less. For fiscal year '23, that corresponding tax rate would be $0.96 per $100 of assessed value. However, in the proposed budget, the county executive has set that rate 3 cents lower at $0.93. This represents an average homeowner savings of about $100. The proposed rate keeps our property tax rate significantly lower than any of our central Maryland neighbors. We are able to provide this tax relief while simultaneously strengthening the county's fiscal foundation. The fiscal year '23 budget makes several investments to secure long-term fiscal stability. The proposed budget includes a $23.5 million contribution to the Revenue Reserve Fund, also known as the Rainy Day Fund. This will result in an estimated balance of $132.7 million of reserves at the end of fiscal year '23. With the support of this council, we have, will have grown the balance of the Rainy Day Fund by $61.2 million since fiscal year '19. The budget fully funds our annual pension contribution and includes an additional $16.5 million of one-time contribution to reduce our future liability. The proposed budget also fully funds the annual contribution to our other post-employment benefits fund, known as OPEB. Two years ago, in the fiscal year 2021 budget, the county dramatically reduced its revenue forecast due to the COVID pandemic, and as a result, created a modest $24.7 million structural deficit by utilizing its fund balance to cover some recurring costs. Last year, we reduced that amount to $19.9 million, and this year, I'm pleased to report that the proposed budget completely eliminates the structural deficit. This means that every dollar of recurring costs will be covered with recurring revenue. As to what is being funded in the budget, I believe there is much to celebrate. The proposed budget includes $834.7 million of county funding for the Board of Education, a $50 million increase from last year, and the largest incremental increase in county history. The budget prioritizes several key components of the Board of Education's request. First, we propose fully funding the compensation package for educators, with a step increase and a 4% cost of living increase for all units. It also includes the final back steps for units 2 through 6. Second, we make critical investments in special education. The budget includes the 70 new special ed positions required by the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, and also proposes 49 additional positions on top of that. The budget also fully funds the requests for 29 new social-emotional learning positions to meet the growing need for behavioral health services in our schools. And it funds 20 new English language development positions and three new bilingual facilitators. One of the other upcoming requirements of the state blueprint legislation is full-day kindergarten. This budget proposes 48 new pre-K positions to convert half-day programs to full-day pre-K classrooms. And finally, the budget includes 140 new classroom teacher positions, including the final year of staffing required to fully open Crofton High School. All told, the proposed budget contains 424 new positions in the public school system, many of which are either required or will be required in coming years under state law. Anarundel Community College, ranked number one in the nation by Forbes Magazine last year, will receive $47.4 million in county funding, an increase of $1 million from last year. Our library system will receive $27.3 million of general fund support, an increase of $2.5 million compared to last year. Part of this funding will support their new kindergarten readiness program. This budget represents a big step forward for our Department of Recreation and Parks, which is proposed to receive eight new positions. Back in fiscal year 2008, before the Great Recession, the department had 113 merit positions in the general fund. Over the next five years, the department lost positions each year until it was left with only 85 merit positions in fiscal year 13. With the proposed eight positions in this budget, the department will finally have recovered to the staffing levels before the recession, with 116 proposed merit positions in this budget. I hope the council will agree these positions are much needed, as the department has several new parks and facilities, and we anticipate taking acquisition of the property soon to be known as Crownsville Hospital Memorial Park in the green heart of our county. Similarly, new positions are being added for the departments of both central services and aging and disabilities. Each of these departments has taken on new county facilities and services over the past year. For public safety and our first responders, the proposed budget of $394 million adds seven new positions in the police department, three in the fire department, and one new position in the sheriff department, to add to the three positions the sheriff got in mid-year fiscal year '22, and one for the emergency management office. The budget also includes five additional positions in the state's attorney's office, four to support the body worn camera program, and a licensed clinical professional counselor for the child survivors justice program. Other notable new initiatives include two new inspector positions for the Office of Planning and Zoning, as well as a new regional planner. Two new planning positions are also proposed for the Department of Transportation. The county successfully negotiated agreements with all 11 of its bargaining units. The proposed budget also includes a 4.5% cost of living adjustment for nonrepresented employees and funding for a 4.5% increase for contractual workers effective upon renewal of their annual contracts. For the county enterprise funds, trash and recycling rates will remain unchanged, as will the county stormwater fee. The water and sewer rates are each proposed a modest 5% increase, which is below the current rate of inflation. With respect to the FY23 capital budget, County Executive Pittman is proposing to reduce the amount of new borrowing for the first time in county history from $170 million of annual new debt authority to $160 million. This represents a reduction of $60 million over the course of the six-year capital program. Despite this reduction, the capital budget keeps all major projects on track and includes several new key initiatives. This is accomplished by deploying $205 million of the county's fund balance into the capital budget. The entire six-year capital program remains $5.3 million under our debt affordability guidelines. Overall, the total capital budget for fiscal year '23 is $572.2 million, which includes all funding sources. The largest component is the Board of Education with $189.2 million. This is the first time in history that the county is proposing to fully fund the board's upcoming year capital request. Rather than go through a list of individual projects, I will just say that if the board requested it, we funded it. Notable new county projects in the county executive's proposed '23 capital budget include $3.5 million for a new Crownsville nonprofit center, $4.4 million to begin eight new transportation progress, projects across the county, $2.5 million to begin a new joint 911 operations center, $2 million to start work on a new police firearms training facility, and $1.3 million in planning and design funding for two new county parks, Tanyard Springs Park and South Shore Park. The budget also includes $2 million for the Department of Recreation and Parks to upgrade 25 county playgrounds to be more accessible to people with disabilities. In closing, I thank you for this opportunity to present an overview. The county executive and the entire budget team look forward to working with the county council and the auditor as we work together to strike a budget to meet the priority needs of our county residents. Copies of the entire budget, including budget highlights, are available on the Budget Office website at www.aacounty.org. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Trumbauer. Our next presentation will come from Edie Pickin, who is the President of the Association of Educational Leaders. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Good evening, and thank you. First, let me thank the county council for taking the time to hear from us, AEL, which represents Unit 2. Those are the school-based administrators. They are also the special assistants to the superintendent and coordinators of instruction. And I'm here to present to you as it relates to the superintendent's budget. As always, we appreciate any funding you can find to help the school system function. On that note, there are a few issues I will present as it relates to that segment of the budget and salaries. Over the last four years, all bargaining units, including ours, which is Unit 2, have attempted to be compensated for that which we are owed and due. Last year, the superintendent made whole all other bargaining units except ours. We are still owed a step for the year 1516. Yes, I said 1516, while all other bargaining units have been made whole. Currently, we have six people who are on step 40, our highest step, that at the time of 1516 were not what we refer to as stepped out. Our board is saying there is not enough money to cover the budget to cover that. How unfair is that, to not provide for these people who worked as hard then as they do now to not receive what they are owed, yet the superintendent and his executive staff receive theirs? Something to ponder. With respect to negotiations, the Board of Education does not negotiate. They volunt tell you what they are going to offer you, then waste your time coming back to the table when you present a different offer, only to be voluntold again, no, this is all there is. Asking for time to negotiate prior to the superintendent striking his budget is nonexistent. When dates are requested, all bargaining units are given excuses as to why negotiations are impossible prior to November. However, miraculously, after the superintendent presents his budget to the board, negotiations are permitted. Unfortunately, the superintendent's placeholder becomes the last and final offer. This is a habit that has been in place for eight years, which has only de-incentivized people remaining in the school system. This is unfortunate because we are losing incredible talent to other jurisdictions who respect the work that we do. I'm hoping that the county council will take this into consideration. Therefore, we are requesting that the county council not only consider adding additional funds in order to compensate those six employees for what they are owed, but we are also requesting that the county council consider adding additional funding so that Unit 2 can increase the COLA amount from what is currently being offered at the negotiating table, and to specifically earmark those funds for those purposes and no other. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pickin. Our final presentation this evening will be from Kathy Hollerbach, who is the CEO of the Anarundel County Public Libraries.
Yes, my name is Kathy Hollerbach. I'm the COO of Anarundel County Public Library. Thank you for being here tonight so that I can share our requests. I'm here this evening to advocate for full funding of the library's requests in the county executive's proposed budget, and to share some of the critical work our library staff have been providing since we last met. Over the last year, the library has capitalized on its position as a trusted community resource to help the residents get through the pandemic. Working with our partners in the Health Department, library staff have given out more than 135,000 test kits and over 250,000 masks to community residents. Staff have held numerous vaccine clinics across the county and provided dozens of programs on health and wellness health topics, along with offering assistance to job seekers, students, parents, and caregivers. For many years, the library has provided weekly kindergarten readiness programs in all our branches and in the community. These special storytimes empower parents and caregivers to become their preschoolers' first teacher and set kids on the path to academic success. But many of those who could benefit most from those programs may not be able to get to one of our libraries. So, we'd like to expand our reach. The county executive has recommended $661,780 to fund the implementation of a formalized kindergarten readiness outreach program. This initiative would provide us with vehicles and staff so the library can get out into the communities more often, those communities that need us. Additionally, we are urging your support of a proposed $33,900 to purchase menstrual products and dispensers for all of our libraries. Period poverty is real, as we see every Saturday at the community pantry held at the Discoveries Library at Westfield Annapolis Mall. At the pantry, we give out menstrual products, diapers, and healthcare items. We are also asking for your support on a number of cybersecurity initiatives, some of which we are recommended for funding. But we need a position dedicated to cybersecurity in order to mitigate today's environment of constant and complex threats. Lastly, I'm asking for your help to fund a position that focuses on improving our customers' digital experience with the library. This area of service has grown exponentially since 2020, and we can't meet all the demand. These two positions are mission critical, and I'm asking for your support. I'd like to thank the council for their continued support of our libraries and the public watching tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we would now like to hear from members of the public on the budget. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. A Spanish interpreter is available here tonight for anyone who needs this. Madam Secretary, did we receive any submissions online regarding the FY23 budget?
Thank you for asking, Madam Chair. We did get about 29 submissions of testimony through the online testimony tool on the FY23 budget. I believe a copy went to everyone's inbox here, and I'll continue to compile a summary that will get posted online and updated as we go forward.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will invite members of the audience who signed up in advance, and I will call you down in groups of six, in the order that I have you on my paper, and you can take any of these chairs. And just a reminder, you have two minutes each. And apologies in advance if I don't do well by your name. First, I have Leah Paley, Kurt Svensson, James Magnner, Karen Whaley, Jennifer Finn, And we'll go right in that same order that I called your names. So, Leah, thank you. You have two minutes. State your name and address for the record, and you may proceed.
Yes, no, no, there we go. Hi, I'm Leah Paley. I am the CEO of the Anarundel County Food Bank. I joined in September 2021, so still new. Thank you so much for having me this evening. Chair Ravian and distinguished council members, we have been in the community in this county for 35 years, providing critical services like food, emergency services, and other basic necessities to our residents who are under-resourced. We're grateful for the financial support that we have received from the county over the years, but in particular, the last two years, which has exceeded almost $4 million, which we've used to fuel our work, including food purchases, as well as helping to build our warehouse team so that we can keep up with the demand. The pandemic, as you know, has pushed so many members of our community deeper into financial crisis. 52% of the people visiting one of our pantry locations last year had been there for the first time ever, so they had never needed our services previously. Our rates of service went up five times. We were serving 34,000 households each month last year. That's five times what we were doing prior to the pandemic. And as a result of the global supply chain issues, inflation, and the extent, or excuse me, the end of the expanded childcare tax relief, we are still continuing to see a surge in the need. 4% increase in March 2021 versus 2020, excuse me, 2022 versus 2021. So, this is even more pronounced than we were at the height of the pandemic. I'm just here to acknowledge your support and to thank you in advance for any continued financial support from the county to help us meet our critical need. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next is Kurt Svensson.
Hi, Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. I don't like paying taxes. I don't like going to the dentist, but I willingly do both. I do not believe Anarundel County taxpayers are overtaxed. Having said that, as a citizen, I respect the will of the voters and their approval of the property tax revenue cap. I supported County Executive Pittman's proposal to exceed the property tax cap in his first budget, but only because it equated to a recovery of the revenue loss due to previous decisions not to maximize the rate under the cap. I do not support the executive's reversal of this decision in this budget. One might argue the property tax cap no longer has any meaning now, that the state government has thumbed its nose to the concept of home rule for charter counties by allowing local tax caps to be circumvented, to the extent they fund local school boards in excess of maintenance of effort amounts. But that underestimates the will of county voters and is not mindful of unintended consequences like squeezing out of other general fund services. Furthermore, I don't believe that we've really eliminated our structural deficit. There are other ways to return a one-time surplus of funds to the taxpayers. Then again, we don't really even have that. When is county government going to face up to the $2 billion unfunded liability for the Board of Education's retiree health insurance? There's no reason why this shouldn't be funded, just like the county government retiree health insurance is, other than this very bad reason. Ignoring it allows us to undertake other new costs we really can't afford. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Svensson. Next is James Magnner.
Good evening, council. Thank you very much for having me here. I'm appearing in regard to possible funding for the rowing facility that has been planned, we think, for Church Creek. I've submitted a statement regarding the possible damage to the ecosystem that would result from such a thing. But let me also say, I was a legislative assistant to a U.S. Senator from Arizona in the 1970s and 80s. I handled environmental and natural resource issues. We wanted to preserve the character and habitat of the Tucson Catalina Mountains by including them in a wilderness bill. It was opposed by organized four-wheel drive and motorcycle clubs that had been active in the privately owned foothills. They wanted access to the federal land, and wilderness designation would prohibit the use of motorized vehicles. They were well organized and produced an avalanche of cards and letters. The Catalinas are home to big, home to bighorn sheep and many unique species. This is also the iconic Saguaro Cactus and much vegetation exclusive to that area. The Forest Service and local biologists said the ATVs would greatly harm those habitats. We decided to do the right thing. We put the range in the wilderness bill and has been preserved to this day. I smile, actually, when I go back there and look up at the mountains. I know you are faced with a similar decision. Rowers who want a facility in Homeport do not mean to degrade the environment and harm a small but critical ecosystem. They just want to have fun. But it is inevitable. The damage will be extensive and permanent, so on behalf of the species that call it home, please do the right thing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Magnner. Next, we have Karen Whaley.
Karen Whaley, I live in Edgewater, Maryland. Thank you for having me here tonight, I appreciate it. Water access for all, that is the county's mantra. And I'm here tonight to advocate for water access for all, for the county's most vulnerable population, and that's the wildlife that reside in an ecosystem called Little Church Creek. This incredibly diverse community lives along the eastern shore of Homeport Farm Park. This is where red-tailed hawks nest, eagles hunt, waterfowl feast, muskrat live, and hickory shad spawn there. This is critical area. This is where freshwater comes in from upland streams. Over the last 50 years, the streams and the creek have taken a beating from developments, road widening, more development, broken stormwater ponds and systems, water main breaks, and most recently, a tornado. After each beating, the wildlife suffer, and then they rebound little by little. My father, my husband, and I have spent decades fighting for this voiceless resident, these residents of these waters. The county has spent millions on a pond system to keep this creek alive. And now, Reckon Parks wants to pave meadows and build ramps and docks and piers and bring in hundreds of humans along the shoreline. These changes will be invasive, destructive, and permanent. These changes will be invasive, destructive, and permanent. Please honor the restrictions that are on this park through conservation property and the deed. Conserve this ecosystem, benefit and protect this critical area. Keep Homeport Farm Park passive open space. The creatures that live there are relying on you. Do not let them down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jennifer Finn.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Finn, a resident of the Homeport Community in Edgewater, and I'm here to speak out against the use of county funds to develop Homeport Farms Park to accommodate rowing under Budget Item P567500 for boat ramp development. Representatives of the county have stated that the Pittman administration is interested in funding a rowing facility for several private clubs, and they've commissioned a study of Homeport Farms Park for this purpose. And we understand that the administration is considering several million dollars of taxpayers' funds for this project. Unlike other potential sites, the deed for Homeport Farms Park restricts use to passive recreational activities. Specifically, it states that it shall only be used for parkland, nature preservation and restoration, open space, and low-impact recreational uses, and that it shall not be developed or used for intensive recreational purposes or other noise-generating activities. There's ample case law defining low-impact passive recreational uses as activities that are not organized, not team-based, not competitive, and do not require the use of special facilities, courses, fields, or equipment. I have a child who rowed, and rowing violates every description of passive recreational use. Rowing is an organized, intensely competitive, team-based sport. It is noise generating and requires special facilities and docks. In response to opposition, the county has begun using new terms like manual longboats or dragon boats to describe the uses it wants to support, because rowing has been consistently rejected as a permissible use at Homeport Farms Park. Dragon boats are also team-based, organized activities that are not passive. Disguising any upgrades to the park as for the paddler community to try to open the door to rowing at Homeport will be a waste of county resources, because there is no legal basis for rowing or any other team-based sport in the deed. We will fight it. It will be costly for the county, and it ultimately will not be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And last on this panel, Stephen Hall.
Thank you, Honorable Chairwoman and Council. Thank you for hearing my testimony on behalf of a favorable approval for the FY23 budget. I represent myself and I represent rowers. And notwithstanding what you've heard here so far tonight, and will likely hear over the rest of the evening and on the 18th, rowing is a very important sport, and access to the water, which we already do row on, we already row on the South River, we already watch in amazement at the eagles as they fly and fish, and the osprey and the herons, et cetera, we're very respectful of the habitat. We're not a destructive group of people. In fact, we help maintain the parks and locations where we currently reside. I'd like to dispel some things that have been publicly put out in newsletters, and I'll begin with the fact that it looks like people are representing that we want to build a large, massive boathouse, something on the order of probably the Philadelphia-type boathouses that you see on Boathouse Row. This is not the case. We are not asking, nor are we proposing, any kind of formal boathouse, but certainly facilities to store boats, just like there are currently kayaks being stored on this property. I'd also like to address the fact that it is stated that we will overwhelm the park and block out other people from being able to utilize the park. This is, again, absurd and not true. We have partnered with the rowing and paddling community to be inclusive, and for some reason, we find that the paddling community all of a sudden is up in arms despite the fact that they have several dozen launching points from which they can launch onto our county waters. I'd like to also say that we will not locate it. Can we just finish one point? Thank you. We will not seek to locate powerboats at any docking facility, which is in keeping with the agreement that the county has on its purchase, and we will be inclusive to all rowers and all paddlers alike. I thank you, and I hope you support our efforts here.
Thank you very much. This panel is dismissed. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to do something a little bit unusual. Before I call the next panel of speakers, I have received dozens and dozens of emails about Homeport Farm Park, and I've wanted, I've reached out to our Director of Recreation and Parks, Jessica Lays, just to get some clarification on some of the information that's going around. To clarify, there is no budget request for Homeport Farm Park in fiscal year '23. There is no specific study for Homeport Farm Park at this time. What there is already underway is a study for all underutilized parks in the county. Any recommendations that would come out of that study would be subject to the park development process, which would include public meetings and a future budget request that would be specific and public input. So I fear that there's been a lot of misinformation, and regardless where you, you know, fall on this topic, I just wanted to make sure that that is clear. There are no specific funds or plans for Homeport Farm Park at this time. Just to continue, there is no, the county cannot use a public park for one exclusive group, and the county is aware of the deed restrictions with Homeport Farm and intends to follow them. So with that, I will call up the next group of speakers. I have Colleen Shields, Chris Poulsen, Julie Rosicky, Molly Owens, Eliana Shields, and Brian Jamison. All right, is Colleen one of you? No, okay, so we don't have Colleen. Chris? All right, you have two minutes. State your name and address for the record. You may proceed.
Okay, thank you, Madam, excuse me, thank you, Madam Chairman and Council Members. My name is Chris Poulsen. I reside in Annapolis, Maryland, and I'm here tonight to speak in favor of proposed boating, public boating ramp piers at Home Park at a future date in reference to what you have just said, under the Recreation and Parks. I'm the Coordinator of Park, which is the paddling and rowing community. We've been working for eight years, and in this group, it consists of Anarundel County Public High Schools, the Athletic Department, Annapolis Rowing Club, Annapolis Junior Rowing Club, Annapolis Adaptive Rowing, Annapolis Dragon Boat Club, the Irish Rowing Club, independent kayakers and paddleboarders. And by the way, adaptive rowers includes people of all ages with a wide range of physical or cognitive disabilities, including blindness, autism, cerebral palsy, traumatic brain injury, and missing limbs due to amputation or congenital defects. Eight years ago, we came together, this whole group, to pursue a dream of having a public boat ramp, which would be inclusive of all groups who wanted to do water sports. We are the only county in the state of Maryland that does not have this facility. Every other county surrounding us does. If you look at Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Prince George's County, Montgomery County, they all have public rowing facilities and public boating ramps that can be for rowers, kayakers, paddleboarders, anybody who can down, and even adaptive people. So that is it. In this county, if you don't live on the water and you don't live in a waterfront community, there, how do you get access to the water? How do we train our high school kids? Right now, high school, rowing high school programs are huge college scholarship. Many college, many high school rowers get this. So I think there's no reason in this county why we can't do this if every other county around us can, and I think it's time. It's eight years we've been looking for this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next is Julie Rosicky.
Okay. Thank you so much, Madam Chair, County Council. Thanks for this opportunity to speak. My name is Julie Rosicky, and I moved to Anarundel County in 2018 so I could be closer to water and water sports. I'm in Crownsville, and yay for the hospital, that's so great. I'm a member of the Chesapeake Paddlers Association, the Waters Edge Kayaking Group, and the Annapolis Rowing Club. So as a forward-facing and a backward-facing paddler and rower respectively, and I can demonstrate if anyone's confused, I have gotten to know these communities, and they are filled with great people, and we all have one thing very much in common: we all love spending time on the water. I have paddled out of many of the access points for kayakers. Thank you, Anarundel County, and all those who've advocated for those. It's really incredible to be able to paddle and see the community through the water. We appreciate the county's willingness to explore Homeport as a community access point to include the rowing community. Clearly, from other testimony that I'm sure you're receiving and that we'll hear tonight, the kayaking community is passionate about maintaining access to South River, and so are we. And we underscore that we would very much like to join them at Homeport, not in any way hinder their access. Homeport, like the county, is the best place for all. If we are lucky enough to join our fellow paddlers at Homeport or any other place that the county deems appropriate, rowers will bring people of all ages, levels of fitness, physical capabilities together, and learn a very old sport and have some fun. We will encourage young people to get involved, and hopefully, some of them will go on to win scholarships to college. My son was one that had this good fortune, became a very responsible person, and saved us a lot of money. He was my inspiration for learning how to row. So it went the other way, kid first, then adult. We will work together with the paddling community to be good stewards of this precious open green and blue space, and I hear very well the environmental concerns, and we've always been stewards of the environment. And we will add a new sport to a long list of wonderful opportunities for Anarundel County. So thank you so much for this opportunity. Please keep an open mind. We are really willing to join with our other paddling friends. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'll just let the last speaker introduce herself rather than trying to guess which name belongs to you.
I'm Molly Owens. I'm the president of Annapolis Rowing Club. I'm a, grew up in Annapolis, and I'm also a retired Anarundel County employee. And actually, Chris and Julie pretty much summed up everything that we stand for. We're a very open club. The ages of our rowers range from the mid-20s all the way up to 80 years old. We are not, as some of the misinformation said, some private rich club. Our dues are actually less than what most people pay at gyms, let alone golfing places. We row spring, summer, fall, and then in the wintertime, we have access to a local gym where we do winter workouts. What we want to do is open up the water access, not just to one specific group, but to all paddlers. I know that a lot of us that row also do other things, like Julie does kayaking. I do S U P-ing all the time. We're usually on the water. What we want to do is open up the water access, which there's very little of in this area, and provide access to everyone. We're not trying to push anybody out. We're not trying to exclude. What we want to do is pull the paddling community together and ask the county to help us find a site that we can all use that's accessible to the public. There is so little of it in this area, and it's so crazy considering where we live and where I grew up. I have seen public access of water diminish at an alarming rate, and this is our opportunity with you all, working with you all, and working with the paddling community. This is our opportunity to provide the public with much-needed access to public, to the public waters. We, as Julie said, we are very good stewards of what we see, because we want it to continue. We want it to expand, and that's why we're here tonight. So thank you very much for hearing us out.
Thank you very much, and thank you to this panel. You are dismissed. All right, at this time, I will call down our next speakers. I have Diane Bunce, Herb Shepherd, Paul from Annapolis Rowing Club, Christian Shields, and then Paul Higgins and Connor Curran. You may all come down and take a seat. All right, you will go first. You have two minutes. State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Diane Bunce, and I live here in Annapolis. My story is a personal story, and it's when I joined the Annapolis Rowing Club 21 years ago. I'm one of the older rowers. I'm 71. I knew nothing before I joined the Annapolis Rowing Club. I had never done any kind of physical activity in high school, other than try to get through gym class, but this taught me how to really partake in water sports. It also taught me the joy of watching the sun rise, or sometimes watching the sunset, even on the same day, from the water. There's really very little talking in a boat. It's mostly listening to the rhythmic movement of oars. There's very little noise or pollution when we get on the water, because our boats don't use gasoline. It's all people-powered. We careful how we pick things up, where we put things back, how we wash, what kind of soap we use. For me, joining the club has also opened up this idea of service. I'm also a member of the Adaptive Rowing Group, where we're able to help people and make a difference in their life by introducing them to this wonderful sport. We need a place to do this. We need a place to reach out to more high school students, to more residents that range in age from their 20s through their 80s. Here's a sport that everybody can take part in. We're not noisy, we're not crude, we're not, don't play music when we row. We're quiet, and the draw on our boats in the water is very low. We don't damage things under the water. We love nature, and that's part of our sport. We also want to be able to bring this to more people, to more high school students. We've seen what rowing clubs in South Africa have done in order to do integration in a very open way. We'd like to be able to bring more students from the schools into our sport and share things with them. We know how to start you at step one and bring you to step 20. That's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Herb Shepherd.
My name's Herb Shepherd. I live in Annapolis, Maryland, and I want to thank the council for allowing us to speak on this topic. I'll cut to the chase. I'm a big supporter of Homeport Farm Park being turned into a multi-use, repurposing for kayaks, canoes, S U Ps, and rowing shells. To be blunt, I have a rowing background. I rode in high school and college. I rode in a public high school that had a rowing program, and took a hiatus and then joined the Annapolis Rowing Club. I also have a daughter who is a graduate of South River High School, who was able to get a scholarship to Clemson University and rode, kind of following in her dad's footsteps. I cannot say enough about the benefits, both physically and mentally and character-wise, for rowing. I would say that Homeport Farms, which the county already owns, requires little infrastructure. We need racks for the boats. We don't need buildings for the boats. It's buffered by Church Creek on the one side and by Woods on the other side, so it's very private. We row early in the morning or late in the evening. We don't, we're not an all-day kind of program, and we try to be quiet, and we try to be, we listen to the boat as we row. So I think that there's a lot of bang for the buck for the county in terms of developing this. Currently, the juniors have to row somewhere else than the older generation does. That's uncommon in the rowing community. You go anywhere else, and they're all together, because there's cross-benefits from having young people learn from old people and vice versa. So I would hope that this misinformation is not taken to heart and that you drill down and find out what's really going on, because this is a huge benefit to the county and long overdue based on water access to the general public. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Next is Paul from Annapolis Rowing Club.
Yeah, I actually have a last name. I'm not like chair or anything like that.
That's how it's written on my, on my list right here.
So my name is Paul Flack. I live in Timber Cove, and I moved here about five years ago because my wife said, "Where do you want to live the rest of your life?" And I started, said, "Oh, you know, down there in Maryland, it's got a lot of water, and I love water sports." I started 50 years ago paddling, and so it's been a long time paddling. I considered myself a paddler first, but somewhere along the line, I started rowing. And so the Annapolis Rowing Club, they, I've been looking for a boathouse for them, a site for them, and working with them on and off for a while, and I came in here to speak and tell you some of what I've seen. I've been in both sports for a while, see both of it. So what I have, probably the best thing to do is tell you about the Anacostia Community Boathouse in Washington, D.C. I just made the world championships a couple of years ago with the dragon boat team. I'd never paddled dragon boats before, but it's a great sport. It promotes international cooperation. I got my shirt on from the Ukrainian guy that I traded from. But anyway, let me run down the list of the benefits. Of course, my phone goes out with, there it is. What it provides, I hope you got the list of things, but, okay, it provides access to the water for both kinds, for both rowers and paddlers, is why we'd want a boathouse. But, or it doesn't even have to be a boathouse. Right now, racks work, but if you go down the Anacostia River, you see this massive big thing. But it's what does it provide, rather than it's a blip causing trouble? And I can guarantee that having that there, you know, I went and did jobs and stuff like that for many years and then came back, and then there was an Anacostia Boathouse. But there's so much more support for the river and the wildlife. I go with the Anacostia Watershed Society every month, and we work on the bio swale, which makes it better for the critters that live there, and it's improved the water quality. It's improved the corridor.
Paul, I'm sorry to interrupt, but your two minutes have expired. Please conclude your remarks.
Okay. I hope you have the list. Read the list. And if anybody wants to see that place, I'll take you out there. I'll give you the tour. I'll take you out in the boat, and that's the way to see it.
Thank you very much. All right. Our next speaker is Paul Higgins.
Madam Chair, good evening, council members. For the record, my name is Paul Higgins. I'm president of Woodhome Circle Community Association. Tonight might be a first for me, as I've testified at many budget hearings endorsing many things like schools such as Marley Middle, Free Town, to include entire budgets as members of the P A B. I see Kirk back there. I recognize that name. He's always on his game. And as S A P Chair. However, for the first time tonight, I will ask the council to review Project H 586900, the Jumper's Hole Road Improvement Project closely and not support it as presented. This project is being sold/represented as the utopia of sidewalks, bike lanes, and traffic control. In reality, it is for a project that is still yet to be defined, as stakeholders continue to have dialogue with staff with a meeting scheduled for the 23rd of May for input. While I remain encouraged by the staff's desire to work with the community, I'm reluctant to accept providing the funding in this budget without a scope, especially if it could be at the detriment of the community of Woodhome Circle and its residents. Furthermore, given the number of persons that use this corridor, it could affect travel to your constituents as well that go through the corridor. I would encourage you to look on the website and look where they're looking to put traffic lights and things of that nature. So our community has been actively engaged in growth in the area dating back to 1989, when they commissioned a private traffic study before Marley Run Apartments went in. Since then, we've participated in meetings with traffic engineers in '95, dealing with Coke Homes in 2006, when they came to us and wanted to build a senior home that later turned into a meeting in 2009 with Jumper's Investment LLC on what we now know as Creekstone.
Mr. Higgins, your two minutes has expired. Please conclude your remarks.
Okay. What I would like to do in brevity is at least acknowledge to people that are here, won't speak, but I would ask that Cindy Claus Higgins stand up, 33-year resident; Rose Stepanik, treasurer, 45-year resident in Woodhome; Dolores Chapel, vice president, 70-year resident in Woodhome; Edna Taylor, Woodhome and Jumper's Hole Road resident, 72-years in Woodhome; and Jan Stepanik, also 35-years in Woodhome. And I'll conclude.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, I have Christian Shields. And seeing that none of the other Shields members, family members, appear to be here, I assume that Christian is also not here. Connor Curran, you have the floor.
Good evening, Chair Wynn Radveen, Vice Chair Pruski, and members of the council. For the record, Connor Curran, District 3. I encourage that this council approves the budget as presented. As a young person, I'm excited to see the investments into our public school system and community college. Fully funding the Board of Education's capital budget request is historic. This investment will allow Anaronal County Public Schools to do what they do best: provide a world-class education with the resource they need to push our students to be their best selves. This investment also feeds into our community college. With our fully-funded Cade formula, we are able to keep tuition more affordable, prepare more students for key workforce shortage areas such as nursing and teaching, develop more programs to meet local employer needs, and expand student services to help more students complete their studies. County government should be supporting our young people. The more that they see Anaronal County is providing opportunity for them, the more likely they are to stay, work, and pay taxes here. I want to thank our state legislators for taking action last session on this front, and County Executive Pittman for continuing the momentum. This budget also restores back steps that have been behind for quite some time now and unifies different units of employees in AACPS. As someone who's signed to be a teacher in this county, I'm glad we are moving in this direction of supporting our teachers. This budget is robust in what it will give to our residents, and I'm thrilled that our various departments that serve the public are each getting something that they have needed, from the construction of a new 911 call center to a $7.8 million investment to expand water access sites. This budget will have a generational impact on our communities, and I hope all seven members of this council will join me in supporting this budget that puts communities first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to this panel. You are all dismissed. At this time, I have three more names that I will call down, and if there is anyone else who wishes to testify, you may also come up and take one of these empty seats. So I have Lisa Van Buskirk, Jay Evans, Amy Ian Coney, and then three additional seats. And I hope I did all right there with that. All right. All right, Ms. Van Buskirk, you are first.
Thank you. You need to hear Radveen and members of the county council. Hello, I'm Lisa Van Buskirk. I start school later in Anaronal County, and I live in Edgewater. I'm here to talk about the transportation elements of the Board of Education's budget. I am grateful that County Executive Pittman has fully funded the board's transportation budget and urge you to do the same. As you well know, transportation continues to be a daily challenge for our students and families who depend on consistent transportation to school. For too many students, no bus means no school. With the help of Prismatic Services and the additional routing personnel that this council funded in June and July of 2020, AACPS will have new bus routes next year and has better information to right-size their bus fleet. In 2015, when I started as chapter leader of Start School Later, there were approximately 55,000 students who were eligible for busing. It's now up to 68,000, and our bus fleet has not kept up with that demand. The 23 additional buses and eight vans will allow the school system to be more flexible and responsive in transporting its students, especially those with special needs and the homeless students. The school buses will likely not be available until either late next school year or the 23, 24 school year, given the long lead time for construction, but hopefully the vans can be placed into service more quickly. Of course, transporting the students depends on the availability of bus drivers, which has been particularly challenging this year. Bus driver pay is a reflection of the value we as society place on their work. If we value their role in delivering our students safely to school, then we must show that in their driver pay by fully funding that budget line item. Beyond this budget, I encourage the Anaronal County to decide if relying on contracted bus drivers is the most reliable student transportation students. While cheaper in a pure dollar sense perhaps, there is a cost to the students stranded at bus stops, as we have seen this year. Please fully fund the transportation requests from the Board of Education, and I also really love our library system. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Jay Evans.
Hi, council, and thank you very much for the time. My name is Jay Evans. I live on South River Clubhouse Road in Harwood. Councilwoman. I am a very large fan of the recreational and nature use of the waterways that are available to us as residents. I do not live on the water. I have car-topped kayaked from Fort Smallwood to Galesville and all places in between, and I love it dearly and that community. But I'm here today to talk about the transformative power of rowing. And for me, I started as a 15-year-old 41 years ago. Public program, Seattle City Parks Program, and it literally changed my life. It's changed many of my friends' lives on these teams. And I will say, not just the exercise, but the camaraderie and the teamsmanship on these teams is fantastic. It is a very, it's an athletic event, but it's a very passive event for the environment. You're in boats. You're not making noise. You're working amongst each other. And I believe that just the sheer, just the way it unites people, I work with the Adaptive Rowing Program here as well, and I've seen folks come into this world of rowing when perhaps they hadn't thought they had an athletic endeavor in them anymore, and it's been just beautiful to see. My dearest friends have been in this sport, and again, I also kayak. I appreciate that community, and I appreciate the neighbors in our neighborhood. But I just think we've looked so long for a spot to do rowing, and we're a bit desperate at this point. We really need a stable place, and we seek the county's help to find a place to continue our sport. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Ms. Ian Coney.
Can you hear me okay? All right. Thank you for the time, council. My name is Amy Ian Coney, and I'm here in support of the facility at Homeport. I won't reiterate everything you've already heard. There are so many people here representing Annapolis Rowing Club, as I am. I joined over 21 years ago, took the first Learn to Row class, and was hooked right from the get-go. The unique thing, a couple of unique things that I will point out about the sport that haven't already been discussed are the fact that in those classes that you take, anyone can sign up for. You will find mother-daughter, father-son, you know, people of all ages and abilities in the same class at the same time, learning something new. And I was one of those people. Some of my folks that I learned with are actually here with me tonight. I think the unique thing about it, though, is that one thing that I really find to be just so motivational is to see people come out there, and they look around the room and think, "Why am I here?" And they introduce themselves, and they say things like, "I don't know, this might be crazy for me to try this, but I just have always wanted to try something like this sport." And this club offers that opportunity to people across the entire county, no matter who you are, to come out and try something new. Had I not tried that new sport when I did 21 years ago, I wouldn't be sitting in this room fighting to keep Annapolis Rowing Club a viable opportunity for others. It has changed my life for the better. So many of my best friends I know because of the sport, and I can't say enough good things about it, and my teammates are here supporting it as well. As far as the impact on the environment, the rowing club has been instrumental in actually helping do a lot of tree plantings and things for the environment as a team. We're very good at lifting heavy objects, so we get put to work very often doing things like that. So we've been a part of the restoration down at St. John's, for example, that living shoreline that was put in by Annapolis Rowing Club, actually, a long time ago. And so we are very big stewards of the environment, and I just wanted to express my support for the Homeport Farms development. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to start on this end. Ms. Aerosmith.
Good evening. It's good to see everyone again. My name is Lisa Aerosmith. I live in Hanover, Maryland. I am the chair of the Public Water Access Committee. We are wet feet activists that work to get everyone to the water. Our rule is no special classes, no special favors, no special uses. Everyone gets to the water. I'm here to speak against the rowing facility planned in Homeport Farm Park for design and construction money in FY '23 being snuck through P A 567-500 boat ramp development with design and construction money being used and this project being sent out for bid, as Reckon Parks told the Planning Advisory Board on February 18, 2022, before the end of fiscal year '23. That's less than a year. You know, when they say that something is not in progress, that does not align with what I have been told. At this point, there is an intensive feasibility study going on right now, had been set up for DPW for three concept plans for a rowing facility in Homeport Farm Park. I filed my written testimony late this afternoon. There are three attachments. One of these attachments is a January 24, 2022 email from Reckon Parks Director Jessica Layes to me describing this feasibility study and setting forth the scope of work. Why is the county doing a feasibility study for, right now, for a rowing facility in Homeport Farm Park if there are no plans? Second of all, it's a stealth project. The scope of work in Director Layes' email doesn't mention rowing. They use dragon boats in the description that was sent to DPW, to send up for a consultant. I emailed back and forth with Annapolis Dragon Boat Boating Club this week. Not only are they not part of the park coalition, they had never heard of this feasibility study and told me that five years ago, they determined that Homeport was not a feasible use for their club. The rest of my comments are in the written testimony I filed late this afternoon, and I am welcome, open any questions any of you may have about this process.
Thank you. And Mr. Waddy.
Yes, thank you. Steven Waddy. Live at 7968 Heather Miss Drive in Severn, Maryland. I wish my councilwoman was here, but it's okay. She knows how I feel. I'm here to encourage the county council to improve the funding that the county executive is placing in this budget for the Police Accountability Board. County should fund the P A B by at least 2% of the police budget. That would equate to almost $3,620,000. National Association for the Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement recommends that effective civilian oversight boards be funded at 1% of an agency's budget that it's overseeing. Since this, P A B will be compiling and presenting quarterly reports, meeting with law enforcement, compiling data on policing trends, receiving and reviewing complaints, issuing recommendations on administrative discipline, and spending many hours meeting and debating issues regarding the five law enforcement agencies that it will be overseeing in Anaronal County. The current amount of $719,000 should be increased to meet those demands. To compare, the Anaronal County Police Department's business and travel budget alone is $557,000. And I appreciate you all taking time to listen to me today. The other thing I would say is I do like the $10 million. Please do not change the $10 million that's going towards the housing trust. And if we could increase the funding for the Human Relations Commission, which has oversight responsibilities regarding housing issues in this county that have been totally ignored, as, you know, everything has gone exponentially, the prices have exponentially increased, and segregation has increased due to pricing, not necessarily off of race, but related to pricing associated with race. People can't afford houses based off of, you know, redlining and reverse redlining and discrimination. So that is how, one of the ways that the Human Relations Commission can be used with this current funding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Norman.
Hi, yes, please. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the council. I'm Janet Norman, proud parent of Annapolis High 2018 and 2021 graduates. I got to know our school system even better as Annapolis High PTSA president last year, but I speak for myself on these thoughts tonight. I'm also a Navy Academy granddaughter and an Air Force mom. We know that Anaronal County is a proud military county, and our largest private employer provides military support. What I've learned from my exposure to the military is they don't just speculate and say, "Gosh, I hope our warriors turn out okay." They plan for it. They invest to make those personnel trained, supported, and directed to success in needed paths. When my sons went before the Congressional Academy Nominations Board, those military evaluators told them, "The teacher recommendations we received from you made your application stand out." Those weren't from substitute teachers. Those weren't from substitute teachers. They weren't from new teachers who didn't know my sons. We were lucky, and we got opportunities to serve you, the public, through my son's future service. But as each of you with constituents in Severna Park High School, Broadneck High School, South River High School, and Southern High School might know, and Crafton High School, our teachers are leaving. Ask your students. Your, your constituent families are competing nationwide for scholarship money. They're not just competing within Anorond County. We have a record number of job positions in our county that need trained, college and career-ready students. Please fully fund the long overdue positions that our society needs to produce functioning communities. The school system's request for transportation funding is sorely needed to modernize its delivery of this service for safe, healthy hours. I've watched the military parents of Mead Heights Elementary School beg the board for safer, more functional hours for their 9:40 a.m. start time. Yes, I encourage you to demand accountability and transparency from our school system. It's needed. And your full funding that connects our student talent to the guidance counselors, social workers, bilingual facilitators, and retained teachers for class size adjustment and new mandates will be the difference our county needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you to this panel. You are dismissed. And at this time, I will make one final call. If there is anyone else in the audience who would like to come and share their two minutes of thoughts, oh, I see someone taking us up on that offer. If anyone else would like to join, you may come down at this time. All right. You may proceed.
Hi, my name is Denise Boyer. I'm a, I live in Will Eleanor Community along Church Creek. I'm here because I, quite honestly, am a little bit confused. I heard you at the beginning of this testimony say that there were no plans for a facility at Homeport Farms Park. I heard to say that the county intends to follow the deed restrictions of the park and that there was only a study underway for all underutilized parks. And yet I've heard testimony from nine members tonight, not only supporting a rowing facility, but specifically supporting a rowing facility at Homeport Farm Parks. I heard testimony from those members saying that they wanted a ramp. That's not, a ramp is not consistent with a passive-use park. I heard them say they wanted a boathouse and as an, and their own feasibility study. Asked for all of these facilities and more. Their own feasibility study indicated that Homeport, Homeport Farm Parks was inappropriate for their use. When they looked at multiple parks and multiple locations around South River, that was the one location that they looked at and yet disregarded because it was inappropriate for their needs. So I am confused. We are getting mixed messages here, and we, we, the residents of the communities around that creek really would like, and, and all of the communities around South River really would like to understand what the truth is. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And our next speaker.
Hi, my name is Steve Riker. I'm also a member of the Will Eleanor Community, and I am on Church Creek. Denise hit many of my points, but I also, I'd like to note that the very first speaker in support of Homeport Park as a rowing facility mentioned he is already has access to the South River. So my question becomes, what is the purpose then of moving to Homeport? Is it just a better facility, or is it a cheaper facility? And so when we open that door, what else do we open up to? Secondly, we did hear several times the term boathouse, which of course is an expansion of what they initially came in here suggesting, and it makes me suspicious that there are, is an agenda here that will continue on beyond just a rack for boats. And the final thing I would like to discuss is I heard a bit about competition. If you have these boats that are going to be on the river, they're not going to be silent. Anybody who's been on the water knows that sound travels. If there's competition, if there's coaching, there's going to be a lot of noise, and that's already, again, it's a sensitive environmental area. And having additional noise, particularly in the mornings and the evenings, which has been testified as when they're going to be most active, that is going to be most disruptive to the wildlife that lives in Church Creek. And those are my concerns, and I appreciate you considering them when you make your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to this panel. You are dismissed. At this time, seeing as I've already called and we had four empty seats, the public hearing on proposed FY '23 budget is now closed. Is there any other business to be brought before the council tonight? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, Allison Pickard.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until 9:00 a.m. on Wednesday, May 11th, 2022, when we will meet virtually to continue with department budget presentations. Remember to check the county website for important information and updates on our meetings. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.